Okay, I call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health for the Townhouse Auditorium, June 21st, 2021, 6:00 PM. The meeting is being conducted in person as well as in Zoom. Please stand for the President.
Pleasure allegiance.
And anyone in person recording the meeting or anyone on Zoom recording the meeting? Seeing no, none will continue. First item of minutes, May 24th.
Do you look them over? I saw no discrepancies. Everything looks good in my.
Motion approved. All in favor? By the way, can everyone hear us on the Zoom? Yes? Mr. Taggart, can you hear us? No.
We lost our feedback guy because he's here.
There he is. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing under Mass General Laws, Chapter 166, Section 22, regarding the placing or the relocating of a.
Now let's see, okay. Any difference?
How's that? That's good, okay. All right, now unmute you. Mr. Taggart, he was at that side, Richard Hughes. All right. I asked him to unmute. Okay, Mr. Taggart.
Did, did you ask me to unmute as well?
Who's that? Yes. Oh, okay. She's unmuted. But there's a note to what do you say?
Can you hear us?
No, I.
Not this one.
Is he, is he, is he still on?
Yeah, he said he tried to dial in in the phone and muted himself.
Okay.
There's a chat.
Okay, there he is, right there.
There he is.
There he is. I see him. I see you. We can't hear you yet. No. Can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, there you go. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll try to communicate through my phone. I'm sorry.
Can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah, I can hear you guys. It's not working on my iPad. I had to connect to my iPad and I had to dial in on a phone.
All right, so I read the, the, the hearing notice. We notified the butters. So this is a pole that you're relocating it?
Yes, this is the stub pole that's near the school across the street.
And why, why? A particular reason?
Yeah, it needs to be relocated. The stub pole across the street from the pole that's part needs to be relocated, 18 feet south, the, the inline. Just the, the way it's anchored currently right now, it's a, we need to relocate it because I believe like a gas line or so.
Well, by the map here, it looks like you're relocating the pole down into the fire department property, but I would say if you're only going 18 feet south, if we're talking about the pole that's directly across from the school, I'm not sure the map is entirely accurate. You see that here because Craig, if we're talking the pole that was done, is this the pole that was involved in an accident earlier?
Um, if it's the stuff, I don't know exactly if it's a stub pole. I don't know if that pole is the one that's been involved in a car accident, but if it's a, the stub pole, it's like the one that has the anchor, like the guy wired across the street with the anchor.
They look brand new. Were they replaced recently?
Um, replaced, replaced recently? No.
Because they look brand new. There's two poles there.
Yeah. And the neighbor did tell me they were waiting for someone to come in and put a new pole in. It's almost like this has been done and now you're asking. It did look like it was in the same location, Craig, not moving 18 feet south, that's for sure.
This should be the pole on 29 or property 29.
Yeah. Unless, unless there's a pole further down from the school.
You have the one that goes to the corner.
Almost to that driveway as I'm thinking.
There were two plans submitted.
I'm looking at property.
Showed. To show that it was, that that was the new pole initially, that's all.
So the movement of this pole is just to make room for a gas line? Is that what you said?
I believe that's what it was. There was a, it was for the stub pole.
And is the old pole coming out, the one that's there?
Um, yes, the, the new stub pole is going to be placed 18 feet south of where the existing stub pole is at with the anchor. And that is to support pole six.
And pole six is the main one that feeds into the school, correct?
Yes.
Good question. Since we have all this technology, can we bring it up on Google Maps?
It's trying to do it.
It's so close, Andrew, we take a field trip.
But I'm afraid we lose Mike.
Send you off the screen and FaceTime us back or something.
Well, let me minimize while we're recording. So I can get to. Google Maps.
There's the one. Across from the entrance of the school. Directly across from the entrance. So if they move at 18 feet, it's only going to go down. There's no other pole down here.
Right, and I'll see that doesn't seem too accurate with the, can I really get into? I know you don't know if that'd be a butter, but I really would like to hear.
Okay, do it. Do it on this one.
Yeah, it'll look. I hate to see this, Craig. Does this really provide more support for that?
It's not. He said there's a gas line. They gotta go around. Needs to be moved.
Supporting that pole there, right?
Yeah, so dying there. That's the one that was hit. Like I say, it looked brand, so they did put a brand new pole in there. And now they want to take that out and move it down this way more.
No, listen, my own laptop is a touch. All right, I know you. There's the pole. Yeah. There's the pole. So. Supporting which one?
Supporting pole six right here, the one with the light mast on it.
Yeah.
The least one I moved down supported from the other.
Right, but they put a brand new pole where that pole shows right now. So moving it to avoid the gas line when there's already a pole there, I'm not quite sure, I don't understand the move in the gap, the pole for the gas line part.
I'm gonna read what it says in the work, this work request. It says, causing little wires and parking are complaining coming to our line department.
So it's taking care of the sagging lines then? So you need to support pole six with a stub pole and you need to move it so you can pull the lines tighter?
That's what it says on here. I'm just reading the comments off our work request.
Yeah, if they put the same pole there, it's leaning up the street and they need to pull up the line this way. So maybe they need to move it directly across the street from where it is, you know? So it pulls the pole back. It's.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How can we, yeah, put a push brace in? Put it on the. The school.
Sorry, I couldn't laugh.
Gas is on the, gas is on the east side. Maybe there, if you're, you're sitting on the east side, they could put something?
Yeah, the back of the pole. I mean, that's probably a 40 foot pole. So you put a 40 foot, 45 foot push brace, which will swing way out, like an anchor going way out, not close to the gas line it would be, but then you can eliminate the stub pole altogether.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about the.
Because it is all, that is the Bureau property. We bought that whole interest company, yeah.
It's all town property compared to the other. You don't have any butters here. You can switch a bird mouth. That'll eliminate it.
Instead of a pole, of course, you're saying.
Well, it's a pole, but side desk, 45. Push eye instead of pulling it in across the street.
Down to the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an angle pole. Yeah. I don't know, just cosmetically, some people don't like that compared to the.
Yeah, but it's also one less wire crossing the street too.
Yeah, and it's no butters and you can't receive a pole again.
Like I say, you've already replaced that pole because that is a brand new pole on the other side, right?
Yeah, I know.
Pole six, pole six, the side of, pole six is the side of elementary school.
The support pole, west side, replaced.
So, yeah, the way I'm understanding it is they want to replace the stub pole. They need to move it down so they can pull a pole up. The current location is not pulling it to make the lines tough. So they need to pull a pole back, but like what Andrew was saying, they just put a brace pole up and do that too. So it does the same thing. It just needs to be further in line so it creates that division to pull the pole back in line.
Yeah, I think the only thing you give it is one. Definitely need town permission for that or, which is pretty straightforward. Worst case, that the mole around.
I mean, I don't see a problem with just moving the pole 18 feet.
Well, I'd like to hear more from you, but that's a big change on their law.
But you're, you're taking one pole and you're replacing it with a different.
I understand. You know how they move it along. I'm just saying. They're, they're clear with it. Because I mean, we had enough confusion trying to figure what was going on here. Did they understand? If I looked at this picture, that pole is down at the fire covering edge.
Yeah, the, the picture is not at the scale.
Because that number 19 is the corner of the fire department. And that's where the pole shows. And obviously, that's not it.
And whose property is that?
Gernix.
Who?
Gernix.
Are they on?
Nobody came to look at the plan. Getting phone calls.
Flag them in the pool, not with the nice.
I mean, it isn't, it's in the right of way, you know, from Center Street, so downtown, yeah. All I know.
I like the push idea, but here's the one thing. So we saw an accident with that pole. Removing that pole is one less obstacle for drivers, et cetera. A push pole on the other side is, again.
Push brace, the only concern I have about that is they don't know if they're school buses here.
There's also a lot of, a lot of lines down there.
They hit somebody with the driver right at the red spot.
Yeah.
That's really concerning, but National Grid had already spoke to the customer about it, which I'm hoping they did, if they might put it.
Customer.
Then, well, it'll be their customer or resident.
My concern is all those lines that are there.
Yeah.
If you put a push pole in parallel with all the lines that are there, it would have to be lowered, right?
Yeah, the push brace moves down at an angle. I just don't know what the bus drivers.
Right, might be in the line of vision, right?
Yeah, block of vision.
Okay. That, Mr. Taggart, have you, have you, you know if they've spoken to the, the butters there, the, where the pole is?
I'm speaking to the butters directly. I don't believe so.
I have no problem with that.
And I'll give the butters today on the meeting.
No, I don't believe they're here, no. You know, is, is there an appeal period if we grant this? We'll get it done tomorrow.
Sorry, what? Question for me?
All right.
When are you gonna do the work, ballpark? Hello?
Sorry, was it a question for me? Hello?
When do you think they'll be doing that work?
Um, I don't know exactly when, but this is a hot job. They want to get it done as soon as possible. So, um, I would say within a month. Depending on how fast we can get this, it can move along.
It's got to be effective until July 1st.
Okay, make the motion.
Make a motion to approve the pole permit effective July 1st.
Second. All in favor? All right?
If they butter as a problem, they can see if they don't. We'll go to go.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
We'll sign the paperwork here.
I'm sorry, just to make sure, approved or?
Approved as of July 1st.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. What we got here? Hamden, a landfill solar, Amoresco pilot in Summers Road.
This is Kelly unless you know.
Kelly and Norm.
Hi, how are you? Can you see me?
Yeah.
The grid is much easier.
Norman, there, Jill. I believe he's with us.
Can you hear us?
I can, yes. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I see that Norm has joined also. Um, yes, so, um, I was told that you'd like me to join tonight just to go over some questions on the upcoming pilot agreements or proposed pilot agreements.
And we're, okay, now the Amoresco one would be 68,000, what?
Uh, let's see, so.
68,000.
We have an average of, let's see here.
66,480.
Correct, 66,480, 91. Um, for that project now, that estimate is for both the personal property and the land because in this particular case, it's owned, it's municipal owned land, so that it can be included in the pilot agreement. Normally, that would be taxed separately.
Okay, now, how does that square with, we signed a lease, a rental lease for $140,000 for the land?
So I would refer you to the town council on that. I have nothing to do with the lease agreement. As far, this is, this is solely based off of the figures that were provided to me by Amoresco so that I could project the, I could determine an estimated current value based on, based on the project information they provided and then a projected value over the course of 20 years, uh, including the, including the depreciation on the personal property. It gets depreciated until it hits 30% and then it remains at 30%. Um, but as far as the lease agreement, that's generally something separate. Um, and I would, I would refer you to probably Rose Crowley on that or town council.
Well, my understanding of the lease agreement is that it's 140,000 less the pilot.
Okay.
They'd pay 34, whatever, whatever the math is there, 64, I guess it is, or 74. At least, 66 in pilot. But you said the land was included. And if it's our land, that's what I'm kind of confused about.
Yes, so, so, yes, so because it's currently exempt land, but when there's a change in use with a solar array, that portion being used then becomes taxable because of the change in use. Um, so I've, I've actually been back and forth with town council on this. Um, we've reviewed the laws to, and she's confirmed that in this case, it can be included. It's one of the, it's one of the exceptions in the law.
And Amoresco's okay with the 66,4?
They are, yes. Um, they have, they've received it. They then included it into their draft pilot, which they submitted. Um, I did speak to Rose briefly this afternoon and I know that she was in the process of reviewing all of the wording in the pilot agreement.
Chairman, I did also speak with town council. And she does have a couple of changes. I said to her, I said to her that uh, you would likely sign it next week. You just had some questions tonight. Uh, one of the changes that she mentioned, I think it's worth waiting for, is that she said in Berego, uh, there is a safeguard against late payments and nonpayments, like 14%. It's not in the pilot currently for Amoresco. And she wanted to make sure that a couple of safeguards are in there to protect the town. Um, in, in, in case of that, yes. And so recommends that you, when you finish your questioning, not to sign it this week. There'll be just some minor modifications for next.
But I thought our drop, I thought our drop dead was the 24th.
Pardon me?
I thought the drop dead was the 24th.
It is. And well, um, have we concluded that discussion with, with the assessors as to whether or not it makes sense to do pilots or not? In other words, the 24th, after the 24th, the, the personal property subject to the pilot payment no longer goes into the base and becomes new growth.
I don't see a reason why you wouldn't want this expansion to be part of the new growth, just like we did with the substation off of Allen Street. Can you imagine what the tax base would have gone to if we weren't able to capture Norm, what was it, 20, 30 million for that substation? I mean, I think capturing this type of new growth is the same as any other new growth. It's something we need.
We don't sign by the 24th.
Well, you could sign subject to any modifications by town council.
I think that's fair. I mean, we're talking those.
It, and that would guarantee that this goes into, into the, to the base, but we were having an earlier discussion of whether or not in the future it makes sense to do pilots or whether to just use straight taxes on that, which if we just allow it to be taxable, that would go into the base and become new growth. So, but you have a chance now, I guess, to uh, sign this as a pilot and have it to become new growth.
So under, under the law now, if we sign it now, it's pilot, new growth. If we sign it June 25th, it's not new growth.
So, correct. So you still have the option of entering into a pilot agreement or not. Um, if it's signed after the 24th, it would not be included as new growth for that first year like it normally is. Um, and it would not be included on the LA 4 uh, as part of the, as part of the town value. Instead, it would be, it would be reported on page three of the tax recap under the estimated receipts. So it, it's just done differently. Unfortunately, can't have, we can no longer have both the approved value that's, you know, agreed upon by both parties as well as the new growth that first year. Um, so that's something that, you know, should be considered, but there are some, you know, still benefits of, of entering into a pilot agreement even if you're not able to get that new growth the first year. Um, you know, it does protect the town from future liabilities, um, you know, and prevent ATP cases, appellate tax board cases, when there's agreed upon value between the solar company and the town. Um, it also locks in the amount that can be expected over the course of 20 years in tax dollars. And it is attractive to the solar developers as well. So there, there's still, there's still benefits to having it. It just changes the way that we report it.
Well, I don't think any of us dispute the advent of a pilot agreement in order to project revenues going forward. Just the loss of the increase in the, the base, I think. There's no, I don't see much of a benefit to not do that. Obviously, going forward, other solar fields that are coming forth, that is the way it is. It will be after the 24th. That's how it's going to be.
That's only if we sign into a pilot with them at that point. We go without a pilot.
Well, I do say. I do say, though, I think there's, there's a benefit to the pilot. It allows us to forecast our revenues, you know, before.
And, you know, the other point that I think the assessors made, Kelly made, that makes a lot of sense, is that without a pilot, the assessors are going to have to adjust the values periodically. And particularly big companies challenge that regularly in routine. And so the town will have to spend, clearly have to spend some money on lawyers to defend the values uh, applied by the selection at the appellate tax board. So I think they have a good point on that. But if you sign it, I mean, Rose told me today that she's not going to make substantive changes. A couple of safeguards.
We got the least thing you need to go.
So we're signing subject to.
Subject.
What say you, cloud accountant?
Well, you know, I always think, okay, when I see an opportunity for a sum of money to come in and go to the estimated receipt, that's an immediate impact to the tax rate. It's one of the factors that goes into setting the tax rate. However, we learned last year when the growth popped in that we received a substantial amount of new growth on the, on the new world property. And that is what enabled us to keep the tax rate in 1960 something. So, um, if there's a, the thing that concerns me is that if we put it in the tax base, they've got full-time lawyers that spend nothing but their time trying to make sure that we don't overtax. We could find ourselves in an ATP situation. Maybe not next year, the year after, but future, which, uh, you know, is a cost to the town. Uh, we wouldn't raise that tax, but we may have to give back. So that, that part of it concerns. I'm not sure I answered your question. I didn't.
We have a hand up also here. Who's handing it up? It's Randy and Chris.
They're muted. They, I've asked them to unmute.
Randy and Chris, do you have a question? Comment?
No, that, that's to the audio earlier. My fault.
Okay, thanks. All right.
So perhaps, uh, anything adjustment could be opposed to our agreement, you know, mutually agreed by both parties. All right. So I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the pilot agreement between Hamden Landfill Solar, operated by Amoresco and the town.
We're on Summers. So. Second.
All in favor? All right, the Summers Road Berego pilot. I think it's going to get done, right?
So that one there, I believe, well. So that one there, I believe, um, well, I spoke to Rose about that this afternoon as well. And there are a couple more figures that she needs um, me to provide in order to include that. Um, basically, it's if they include additional um, kilowatts, how, how much the cost would be for each one. Um, I think it's split up separately into kilowatts and megawatts. Um, I spoke to her. I have not had a chance to take a look at it yet. But did tell her that I would get those figures and provide them to her tomorrow. Uh, I also believe that they have a planning board meeting coming up on Wednesday. I was told by the developer. So I'm not sure what needs to be done on the planning side of it. Um, but they have also, I've provided these figures and they have not accepted them yet. They are still in the process of reviewing them and plan to get back to me later this week. Um, but Rose did say that the pilot agreement itself, the wording of it looked very good. Um, besides those couple things she wanted to add into it, the wording itself, um, it had all of the safeguards that Bob mentioned and, and she said that it looked um, really good besides needing those couple adjustments.
What were the figures you provided them?
Uh, so now, so they have also not told us if, uh, so for Amoresco, they had they are looking for a levelized payment to do the average amount for twenty years. Uh, Berego has not indicated whether they plan to do that or not. So I have provided them with a chart showing an estimate, the estimated value and taxes based on the current tax rate for the course of twenty years. Um, but if we're looking at it as an average, as the last one, this one would be one hundred and thirty nine thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and one cent.
We don't know if they want to go along with that.
Correct, yes. They, they said that they were still reviewing it. I had touched base with them today just to make sure.
But between these two projects, we've just picked up over two hundred thousand dollars in additional tax revenue to the town.
Correct. Correct, yeah. And, and with the Amoresco one, would that be, you know, even just the land alone, would that be currently exempt? That alone, that, that income alone, um, you know, will be beneficial on top of the personal property.
All right, any little questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, uh, fiber optic committee.
Alright, so we got all of our candidates here except for two, it looks like. I don't see Tom, right? And then uh, Richard Muse is remote, so. Um, we got all these people that volunteered to join fiber optic committee, who all of them have varying skillsets, which uh, some pretty beneficial to do the research and development process. To get us to the next step, so I think we just need to have board approval to appoint them.
Should we introduce them all?
Yeah. So, you want to start on the right?
Yeah. Andrew Netherwood. I'm uh, I work for utility companies, so I do have some knowledge about stuff in the street, things, not national grid stuff. And uh, I have an eye on other things here, uh, water, water sewer one. Uh, water committee and also conservation.
Sorry, I didn't hear your name.
John Koster retired. I have an interest in this, uh, originally got to start when we were looking into the own system in the town for public TV, public access.
And I was involved several years ago looking at public access. And then probably talked to John about it. And I'm really interested in fiber optic broadband because my sister lives in a family, live in Westfield. And Westfield was really forward thinking about, I don't know, within the past decade. And she, she was so excited, she called me up and she said, we've reduced the cost of our cable by fifty percent because she happened to live in that first area that uh, Westfield was doing. And now Westfield has that whip city fiber that is helping, um, I think around the seven communities now that they're part of.
My name is John Christman. Um, I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission out. And I work as a research scientist in biomedical field. But I also have an associate's degree in computer programming, so I have a background in computers and um, just throughout the last year with a lot of people having to work from home and relying on Zoom connections to do their work, it's it's, you know, something fiber optic internet is something that we're going to need in the near future.
I, I'm Gina Dunn. Um, I actually would have the good fortune to work for the cable company. It's launching its first cable modem of the world as far as I know. When I was working for what is now, now known as Comcast, I worked for them for fifteen years. I've been in I T for thirty years. And um, been longing for fiber optics to come to our area. And uh, I think I can, I can assist them in uh, some of the research.
Richard?
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes, again.
Okay, great. My name's Richard. Well, some of our technology is working anyway. Uh, my name is Richard Muse. Uh, I am a retired uh, uh, teacher. I taught technology in the city of Springfield for a number of years and also uh, was in charge of uh, setting up the uh, computer network for the town of Hatfield. chaired a, a committee or two in the area of technology and uh, I, I think this is a great idea. Uh, that will help as the previous speaker said, uh, you know, we, we, uh, we really need technology. A high-speed technology so people can work from home when they need to. And also our kids from, can learn at home when they need to because, you know, who knows when we're gonna have COVID nineteen version two point O. Uh, be good to be ahead of the curve.
Now, are we going to, is this, we have a mission statement and this is, is this gonna be a limited time committee or we need to do little staggered terms and all the same term?
I think this is what, you want a one-off committee?
And it'll have open meeting law apply after appointed by the selectmen?
I don't think.
Reporting to Bob who's reporting to us technically, they wouldn't have to. That's an ad hoc. Right, you mentioned that before.
That's correct. If, if I have the authority to act, to appoint, and I appoint uh, that they do not have to be, the meetings don't have to be o- open meetings.
It's a working group for you then at that point, right?
And if appointed by the selectmen, they become official, which means we post the meetings and.
Well, this is a good idea you had Bob to round up these people and appoint them.
So Bob, we'd like you to get together some people who'd be interested in looking into fiber optic.
All right, we'll do that.
Some ideas and then come back to the board.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say one thing. People in the past have been talking about, gosh, we're tired of Charter. Can we get Comcast in here? And we're really talking two different things here. People were complaining about the reliability of Charter as a cable provider. And here we're looking to expand, or Bob is, excuse me, Bob, I'm a serial thunder. Uh, looking to change to a different technology that's gonna provide better service. But I think we've always said in the past that
Be a competitive service too.
But this is a whole different dynamic. Changing cable to cable, that was never gonna be an option. Because you're never gonna get Comcast to take over the Charter network and have to buy them out. People have always said that and that's, it says it's an F C C oversight thing. It's a territory swap. From a cable to cable standpoint, it was never gonna be a viable option. Here we have a different technology option for people to explore. And that's gonna be the advantage.
It's gonna be huge.
I'd like to introduce Bob to all of you. He's gonna be the person who talks to you.
I, I think I have everyone's name. I know I have everyone's name. Uh, and we have everyone's email address. Great.
Thank you all.
Uh, crosswalk on Summers Road.
Okay, uh, because of the urgency of um, the uh, the ending of the, of the year. I put that aside for this week. I'm, I did not post yet in favor of coming up with a comprehensive list of boards, committees, their members, the terms, which is what the selectmen were interested in, whose terms are expiring, as well as town officials. I had it up here. Uh, I wanted to show you how far we, we are at this point. Um, yeah, this is what I'm doing. We will publish it, although I won't publish it with the home addresses uh, for the public, but we, we wanted the home addresses. I'm gonna try and get the email addresses and we'll publish it for the terms. Uh, who's, who's on an existing term, who's gone, going to expire at the end of the year and so forth. Both appointed and elected boards are gonna be included. And at the bottom, uh, we've got um, information on our various departments as well. So, including our officers, police, fire and so forth, so this is a it's gonna take a little more time. I think we can probably finish it this week. And then I thought we would put it together in a little pamphlet, make it available to not only the selectmen who have asked for it. But uh, make it available to the public in the hope that maybe it might encourage some members of the public to step forward and volunteer for some of the boards and committees where we do have vacancies, where we don't have people indicating an interest. I think we're all shocked at uh, number of people who volunteered so quickly for the fiber optic committee. Uh, we also have established a special committee uh, to take a look at the eight different options for expansion of the fire station. Uh, right now, I think we have one volunteer for that, although that was announced simultaneously. So, uh, this is a participatory form of government for, for people in the town. And we, we're gonna try and encourage people to participate enough. When I finish this, we'll post it online. Pam and I were working on it today. We're gonna work on it tomorrow. Get it finished, maybe another person can help out as well, as well as the town clerk who has a lot of information. The information is available. It's there. We have it. It's a matter of pulling it all together, I think, in one large file that will be comprehensive in terms of appointed boards and elected boards, as well as the terms of the various members.
As far as the fire target, you did get an email, right? You had a couple of people interested. Okay, there's a couple other people interested.
This is just, you know, a draft. But I would expect to be able to have something to the selectmen for next Monday to review. And I think it's because there are so many boards and committees and so many members and so forth. It's gonna require a review, so we make sure that we're completely accurate before we print.
Question? I know you said you're working on new addresses and not post personal emails too?
Uh, no, I don't send it. I think it's gonna be.
I'm just making sure. You said no home addresses.
No, no homeless and then no personal emails. If we do that, then you'll be bombarded with commercial messages. No, we, we will have that information. But what we put online and publish would be the name of the committee, the members of the committee and what their terms are.
All right, thank you. You're working on that. All right, uh, inventory of town property.
What was the response to the Summers Road line? And you brought that up, but didn't talk about it.
I haven't talked about it because um, plan is to post on combines. And I have the data uh, that's gonna be posted on combines, but I haven't quite completed it and I haven't posted it.
That's right, just so we have a meeting this Thursday, so we're probably.
Right. And so it's gonna include a crosswalk as well as warning signs, flashing signs, so when you push the button, it flashes to make it safe to cross. And there'll be solar, solar power.
Right, uh, inventory of town properties.
We did uh, send it to you in the packet.
So, okay, so this, this is the list used by the insurance company, okay? So, this is a list that shows location and address of building, building value, and then it says contents of the building.
This is not complete, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think what we need besides this is a list of other values that the town has. For example, the owl here and the microphone and the computers and so forth.
So the highway department sent a pretty nice thing that shows how many power blowers they got, right? Like, like for instance, that we have here just, it says memorial park wreck equipment. So there must be some building or shed they have there. It's valid at two hundred, the building's value at two hundred twenty-nine thousand. And it's, it says the contents is zero. So, you know, they have mowers, they have, right? So. Yeah, they probably do, but, but, but we don't know, but.
No, they don't. I'm trying, trying to figure, you got equipment and you got a building, so I think the equipment must just be the two twenty-nine the building is. Unless they come on the spray park, maybe that's.
Is there any chance that that blanket coverage includes building and contents?
That's what I was thinking.
I don't see the spray park on there. I think that, I think nine is actually the spray.
But the other issue I have is the
Recreation Building and Bath House. You're talking about that, that's recreation.
How many laptops do we have?
That's all one, but is there gonna be a level? I mean, are you, you know, anything? You know, we're counting things five hundred dollars and up. Computers, that should definitely be tracked.
You know, or, or.
Vehicles count too? Like their trucks?
They have all that.
This is a structure list.
Right, so.
There's backup behind that one list that you're looking at right now. Contents, the Dean Phil's he talked about.
Police have it, the highway department, I'm sure the fire department.
Uh, the, the stars are aligned to get this completed, to do it thoroughly. The capital improvement committee is also interested in this and they have it on their agenda. We, we have what we have here, but we can also improve that with a survey of other technologies for one thing.
I really go back to, I think Pam had a pretty good list on the Gatsby thing, where they have been, right? Always been monitoring that, so I'm gonna start with that and then just.
We've been purchasing a lot of equipment. I get, we've purchased a lot of stuff. I just think we have an inventory on it because if anything goes south.
No, we know what we have and I have printed copies of it. And the reason I have it is that we are required to report that to the state and federal government.
So I wanna know. Moving around, uh, any, any uh, thing about the D E P and the testing for the water, that water program they have?
We have until the thirtieth. Uh, what, the tech, the, 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 the state. What the tech, the 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 state will will do it. But they have to have homeowners step forward and provide a sample of the water that they have. So I spoke with Jane this afternoon.
Weren't they sending, they sent letters out to, when they had some areas.
Yes, they did. They did. I don't know that they have any response. I checked with Lori and Jane. Um we know why they were targeting that one area. I thought, no, I know. I think it's just they're being comprehensive. Um in that one area, I mean, you can see all those dots where the.
That's Raymond Drive.
Yes.
By the uh off course.
Right, and they also write down along Main Street too.
Main Street, and then they have the dump.
To try and reinforce this, uh I had asked Jane to pick out one of those files that were sent out. Read it carefully, the one that would explain what they're trying to do to the public best. We're going to post that on the website tomorrow. We have a few days, maybe some of the residents may do it.
Right, uh stormwater bylaw I brought up oh um only because uh there's a couple of things that the selectmen have to do. One of them is, once the AG approves the bylaw, I guess we've been waiting for that. We have to, we have to designate in writing the agent, you know, which would be the building inspector, the job you said, we're going to do that. And then we have a set of fee schedule. Uh they have a fee schedule now, twenty-five dollars, but there's it might be a different fee schedule. Uh we made a different fee schedule at some point. So I usually bring it, put it on our radar that we got to get that done sometime.
If you do that, perhaps let me also bring up to Wendell, we should have a periodic review of all our fees from that department. So it's a good chance to maybe bring that forth.
Are you planning on changing the the residential fee schedule, uh twenty or twenty-five dollars to the small homeowner doing something? I'm just going to put it in there. The reason we picked that is because we know how people don't like the full permits. Too much of the fee, people are just going to ignore it altogether.
Yeah, no, I want I want to plan to change it. We just, I just wanted to put it on our radar that at some point when the AG approves it, we need to make a a permanent designation of what it is.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, the reason we picked that small number was for small residential people that want to fence in or swimming pool or something like that. You're going to get them to pull permits instead of ignoring it.
All right, uh what else we got here?
The updates.
Updates. Fire station circuiting, one person, dispatchers.
Well, I can uh I can tell you a about a meeting this afternoon with um the three police sergeants and the chief regarding the additional responsibilities that they feel that they have as a result of the changes that we're making July one. The upshot of the meeting was they're going to send me a written statement as to what they're interested in talking to the selectmen about. And I was going, I said I will request an executive session next Monday night to talk about what the trollmen basically are interested in.
This is, this isn't the contract, though. This is the.
No, but I did say that we consider all of this part of the contract, even though it's separate. We don't want to close an arrangement or a deal for this area and then say, oh, well, now it's it's all new again. We're talking about a contract. I did also speak with the town accountant this morning uh about the administrative fund. Uh he said that only one twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollar withdrawal has been made. That was for the automobile.
About only one was withdrawn per town meeting.
Yes.
The other was drawn as a pay down of the balance because we can no longer, well, we weren't supposed to at the beginning, but that way, we can't use those funds for any other purpose than as a general fund.
Right.
So I took the twenty-five out, which was the town meeting thing, moved that to the general fund. And then because there's still so much money in there, another twenty-five thousand, moved it out. I'm waiting on Kathy and Eddie now. She will give me a list of receivables uh that they build out. I will hold that back. You know, in case somebody doesn't pay or whatever. It doesn't happen very often, but uh and then um I'll I'll sweep the rest of the money after June thirtieth into the general fund. So that's a sizable amount of money going to the general fund. They took the twenty-five for the car and then swept twenty-five, but then waiting to see the recap, make sure we don't have an accompaniment against, it makes sense.
And so part of what will be discussed in executive session is the proposal on details. I think you're aware of it. Um you know, they're looking to rather than or in addition to.
Well, let's let's, let's figure what we can talk about and not talk about.
Yeah, I, you know, we we really need to address this in executive.
I don't think so. I know, because what's their address? They want more money to to schedule details. We have this people in there who can do that five days a week. And if someone calls for detail after four o'clock at night, they can send it to another town. That's their option. It won't cost us any money. It's my position.
Yeah, I don't think they, that was the timing of it. And that's the time.
No, no, they they want to separate from the contract.
That's my point. I'll agree with that.
Anything, Al?
Well, I have something in my report having to do with a couple of these other items. Highway superintendent and I conducted a walkthrough for the highway garage project on the fifteenth. Uh we had nine bidders who attended. At Larry Tuttle's suggestion, we extended the deadline for submission, the to July fourteenth. Uh several of the potential bidders wanted some additional information from Mr. Tuttle, which he sent to me and I sent out to them today. I think we're on track. Get some good bits. I'm surprised that's there's so much interest. I thought a lot of contractors would have plenty of work to do, but it looks like that's not the case.
They want to jump on the early schedule. Makes sense.
Mr. Gentile, well, are we going to do my report now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Gentile is on this call. He wants to inform the board uh of the grant situation regarding uh the state nine eleven office and dispatch.
So be it. Make it so.
How is everybody? I want to make sure everybody can hear me. Okay? Okay, um on Friday, I was informed by the state nine eleven department that we did receive um grant money or grant funds for our merger. Um one of the items that we received funds for was for the um the fiber, one hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred and six. Uh was another was for the upgrade for the Hampton Police Department in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Uh that upgrade will allow us to uh view all cameras, be able to open doors, unlock doors, and it will also install a a nice video phone in the lobby of the police department uh as well. Also, the transition award for the town of Hampton in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that the town of Wolverhampton assesses the town of Hampton for the dispatch services.
Tony, you also will be monitoring the uh the cameras in the town hall as well, correct?
We are, yep. We have cameras up right now. I actually purchased a separate uh computer system and monitors just for the cameras for Hampton. So we'll have those on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week as well.
Well, and Tony, I know I've told you this before, but we really appreciate everything you've done and this is, you've done a fantastic job and you know, uh it's great for our town, two towns to do this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and it's it's great to be able to be partners in this. And I think that uh this merger i- is has benefited both communities greatly.
Thank you.
Uh also, Pam has recruited a student from the regional school district uh to assist with Zoom programming uh for Hampton boards and commissions when they need it. Uh I think the one that needs it at this point is the planning board. And so I've been doing their Zoom programs, but I don't think that's really my responsibility. So um the chair asked if we try and find a student and she actually has found a student who is coming tomorrow, right?
Well, I didn't hear back. I didn't hear back from her, but I did call to uh tell her we'd like to see her tomorrow.
Okay.
Haven't received a phone call, but I'm hopeful that she will.
Are we paying this person?
We will pay her minimum wage, I think, is probably what would be recommended. Uh I told her I thought that's what we would do.
How do we handle the equipment then? Does she, does the owl and the mic come out beforehand, the laptop? And then what? Joanne will put it back in her office afterwards?
And shut it off. They have their meeting on the twenty-third, which is Wednesday.
Right, I'll be there.
So that's why I've discussed having the student come tomorrow, do the training, make sure she knows how to use it. Then I'll be available to help out if needed, so. As I said, most of my time this past week preparing the master template for the point and word committees. I mentioned the meeting with Sergeant Yvonne and the others. Uh we've had a a com- a complaint which was forwarded to uh BHN regarding their employees speeding down Oakdale Road. So.
I thought that speeding was cleared up once Cliff moved, but apparently not.
This this problem on Oakdale Road just continues to fess. We're meeting with dispatchers to discuss the closeout. Capital planning committee uh is meeting tomorrow.
No, we're not.
Oh, it's on my calendar.
No, we pushed it back because Lisa was marrying her.
Good, that gives me some extra time because we're finalizing the, I remember I made the commitment to make sure that the twenty-year vehicle replacement schedule is finalized and up to date. I do have data uh from the police department. Uh mileage for all of their vehicles as well as repair costs by vehicle. Uh I have it from the highway department also and uh the the only loose end right now is the fire department. And where we get that data. And so then we'll have, we'll have not only a twenty-year projection of the needs for vehicles by the town, but also I think the most important information that decision makers like the advisory board and the board of selectmen can have is how much are we spending on these vehicles? And not what year they were made, but are they running well and are or are we spending a lot of money? That's, I think, very important in making the decision. Uh the plumbing inspector, I think you probably are up to date on that. Special employee.
I remember asking last, did we have that list? Don, you recall, we made that, where is that list of specialist employee?
We have, we have the list.
I remember asking, you emailed that to me a few months ago.
While we're on this, so what do they want to do there?
Just open the water again. They closed, here's the problem. Dennis Junior closed last year when he wasn't plumbing inspector. And then his dad passed. So the question, who knows how to open it because you closed it? Obviously, be the guy.
No, they're talking about replacing a water heater.
That was a different thing. It wasn't part of my conversation. That wasn't, it was just opening the, just turn the water back on.
They're talking about, they're talking about putting a water heater and putting new piping in.
Dennis told us last year, when we were invoiced for the work that he did, that we were going to need a new water heater. I asked him about that today. I said, I thought we did it. And it was talked about, but it needs to be done now. He has stuffed the pipe. I don't know why. Uh not with just a shut off, but stuffed the pipe. And anyway, he's on board to get everything up and running, but we do need a heater. He's looking for a price on that and will know that. He's going to work on Monday.
I did talk to London. They're willing to pay the expense of getting it done itself. So good with.
The issue for you, the board of selectmen tonight is, in order to do this legally, he has to file a disclosure statement with the town clerk. And the board of selectmen needs to vote to grant the plumbing inspector an exemption from general laws two sixty-eight A section twenty.
Twenty or twenty-one?
Twenty.
I'm kidding about that.
I think, I mean, I think, I think we did that when we did the special. We can easily do it again.
Somebody did a rot.
We did. We did a bunch of.
Was it twenty that you used? When you designate, he is a special employee.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're saying that you've already, by designated him a special employee.
But not him, but the position.
Position.
The position, right. So we can just do this.
The checkbox thing.
Right, I'll make a motion to grant the plumbing inspector, position plumbing inspector, an exemption from general law two sixty-eight A, section twenty.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we beat it to death.
All in favor?
Yeah, we have. And lastly, some good news. Uh ARPA funds have arrived. That's the American Rescue Plan Act. The town will receive total of about one point five million uh as time goes by. We got the first installment last week. Uh two hundred and seventy thousand, nine, five, four. These funds are going to be earmarked initially for the water project down Main Street.
I did send an email to the board suggesting that Mark has had a program over the past four or five years of the ditches in town, making them basically pipe systems and covering them over. Uh Ames Road has been done, maybe some of South Road, Burley Road. I think it'd be appropriate for some of the leftover funds to continue that project. Again, it reduces maintenance for the highway department. Also, it's a big safety factor for some people. Craig May knows, coming down North Road, you see those bush-covered dishes, dishes down the side. Kids don't know they're there. And again, you know, it's maintenance.
That's been on Mark's plan for a while.
It is, but it wasn't a funding thing. You get into a problem where it's anywhere from a hundred, two hundred dollars a foot to do this separate project. And that money took away from basically road work. Because the ARPA money does check the box for this type of thing. I think it's a use we should look for for the extra money.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to try to use some of the ARPA money for fiber optic too. Yeah, that'll be the competing.
There's no competition. We work together.
But I mean, if there's going to be further use of the money for either that or for fiber optic, that's.
We can all drink from the cup together.
Close, do you have?
Uh that concludes the report.
We got permits. We got a variance to go.
Yeah. Let's have a request for a variance on thirty-two-year roads. Uh setback to existing well to be less than a hundred but greater than fifty. Setback proposed at sixty-six feet and a reduction of ten-inch setback distance from soil absorption system to foundation wall. That one's pretty rare. Again, both these are endorsed by the uh health agent. And you know, we're road, it's pretty closed in there, so. Motion to approve both variances as requested by Lori.
Second.
All in favor, right? What else we got there?
I have planning on, planning on Wednesday, housing authority on Thursday. I'll be able to report back to the board to ask to their request for CPA uh funds.
We have a, we have a stormwater MS four proposal. Is this the one they do every year?
Yes, it is.
Funny, didn't they actually, there's a bit left in that. We've not you know, the closest thing is there money left for time bond stuff? Yeah, but I mean, it seems like there's still money left prior to the end of June.
We need to borrow this tonight or?
Yeah, we need to get it.
Make a motion to approve the.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Am I signing this? One second. And the other selectman reports?
Got Parks meeting tomorrow night. Uh library trustees are meeting on Saturday morning. It's Kenny Valley Water District meeting next week on Tuesday. All upcoming meetings. It's Kinnick Valley Water District meeting next week on Tuesday. All coming meetings.
I'm gonna put this in the signature.
Thank you. Did you see the others?
What else we got?
Signature file. I had a couple of things to sign.
Appointments and that stuff, right? The administration report we did, or A B C C advisory.
Yeah, they extended that.
April twenty-two.
April twenty-two. And 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 to go.
All the essential emergency measures under the emergency have been enacted into law now.
He's trying to make up for time. Keep in mind, he closed the bars on St. Patrick's Day. He's trying, yeah, so people remember. Charlie Baker.
Anything else to come before the board? Want to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.